Welcome everybody to the work session of Wednesday, November 8th. Can I have a motion to open the work session?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Alright, before we start, I just wanted to say congratulations to the board members who will be serving for next year, as well as to Jen Klein who also was elected yesterday, so thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
I know it wasn't a difficult one.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's move right on to, we're gonna start with a discussion of a draft local law regarding chapter sixty-five of filming.
So, we, what the board has before it is a draft of a local law regarding chapter sixty-five filming. It has been brought to our attention that there are some ambiguities in our current law and there are some not current applications of filming that we don't address in our current filming law. That combined with ambiguity around when the twelve month period of calendar year runs from, and last but not least, the fact that a penalty for offenses is less than the cost of a permit, where it is all to ask council to, along with our building inspector and Tom, you're on, terrific.
How are you feeling? And our chief of police, how are you feeling, sir?
Very good, thank you, almost successful.
Good.
I'm hopeful.
Never fun.
Anyway, so we have, so we've, we've taken a look at the, at the draft local law and hoping that we have been able to address some of the deficiencies in it. We have addressed the penalty section. Let me just grab a sheet and put it together. Thank you, okay. So, in the first instance, we, we talked about the definition of filming and we've expanded it to include the taking of motion pictures, commercials, advertisements, whether on film, videotape, photography, digital recording or other reporting medium for commercial, educational or for not-for-profit purposes. We've made sure that the definition includes but isn't limited to onsite presence and mobilization setup and breakdown, which we have found, the actual breakdown and mobilization is actually more, excuse me, is actually more impactful to the neighbors than the actual filming per se. So we've really seen no reason to make a distinction when we define filming and filming activities. We've struck the old subsection E, activities conducted solely on private property, whether for commercial, non-commercial or educational purposes, where the activities will not result in temporary adverse impacts on neighboring or adjacent properties. We found that that was rather ambiguous and provided no guidance to either the people trying to enforce or the people who were trying to abide by the law. We further amended the definition of major commercial production to just be commercial production. We've eliminated the budget because those were, we're not sure when the original draft was, but it was many decades ago and doesn't reflect what a current budget would be. And we've made sure that we included online entertainment providers, including but not limited to streaming services, which is so popular now. And we, we've had included a definition of streaming services. The original draft had a reference to subscriber, we've deleted that. We have made sure that the seven days of filming that are allowed are within a calendar year, as opposed to any twelve month period, so that it's very clear to all parties involved what timeframe we're talking about. And we have increased the penalties for offenses. Punishable by a fine of not more than five thousand dollars per day per offense, plus the cost of a film permit fee as set forth in the Newcastle fee schedule. The issue was is that the penalty for not getting a permit was cheaper than getting a permit, so that's sort of defeated the purpose. And we used the same fee structure as we do for as-bills in the building department. And that's where we are. Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I'd like to add is that we extended the violation period twenty-four months if they should violate.
Thank you. So that if it turns out that there is a violation, they would not be able to obtain a hundred percent money.
And what about if it's, what about if at the time, even if it passed twenty-four months but hadn't paid their fine?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask, can we put a lien on the property?
Or not, or even if you'd lost, we'd get a new period.
Right.
So now we're in month thirty-six, month forty-eight, we still haven't paid.
And can you put a lien on the property?
The person making the request, west for the current name, is it always the property owner or is it the services?
Is the property owner's asking a request?
Can having like no outstanding fines be part of the requirements?
Or I was gonna say, or the twenty-four months runs from the payment. The twenty-four month period runs from, yeah, from the payment.
Date of such conviction and satisfaction of fines.
So the consequence of non-payment is just not getting a permit, another permit. I mean, we don't put a lien.
Well, we're talking about if we can enhance that.
So that they'll.
No, it keeps running unless they pay, they're fine, the period.
That's what I think.
Well, I get that, but, I'm a one-shot guy and I, you know, I do one filming and I'm done. I sell the house for three years, I haven't paid it, I don't care, I made my fifty grand, I haven't paid it, I'm selling the house.
Can we, can we lean?
Yes.
A lien is talking about.
What are you doing about a lien?
I, well, it's assuming, whether we should is a different question, whether we can is a different question.
Yeah.
I think can is our question, should is across that bridge.
Can you pose a lien first before paying fines?
They don't do it on vehicles.
We only do it for land use.
Water bill.
Yeah, we do it on water, but water's, you know.
Yeah, it's different, right.
But couldn't, but couldn't we, because it could be a lot more, it's, it's up to five thousand dollars per day per offense. So it could be a lot more than five thousand dollars. Somebody's filming for a month.
No, if you put it in the statute, I guess you can do it without doing it.
If I may interrupt, I might be able to help out with this. Under sixty-five dash eight penalties for offenses, section E, the imposition of such fine shall not be the town's exclusive remedy in the event of a violation of this chapter. The town may pursue any and all other legal remedies available to it in connection with any violation of this chapter, including recovery of the costs and reasonable attorney fees incurred in the prosecution of any criminal or civil proceedings. If you'd like to lead, lead into that with the leaning of the property, that would might be your caveat right there, to recover, dock it those fees.
Yeah, because we don't want to be in a position where we have to sue a resident clearly, but if we could place a lien on a property for unpaid fines, I think we should.
I mean, that's the easiest way to get the money eventually.
Mm-hmm, sure. Can you just look into it and see if it's possible for us to do that?
Sure.
But ultimately, what we're trying to accomplish is to have residents have the quiet enjoyment of their property. I mean, ultimately, that's the point, it's great if we could get money out of it, but that's not really.
Yeah, it, it's a move of the law.
If we could certainly, if we could put a lien, I think we should, but the point is quiet enjoyment of, of properties in a residential area.
Yeah, my only thought with the lien was that, you know, is people know that it's something that they can't just kind of brush off, that it's, they're gonna pay it one way or the other, then maybe it just helps to enforce the law for those who are trying to violate it.
Yes. It can deter, it can deter everything else.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should put a lien. I think possibly going to jail for fifteen days isn't an awful, like, I think people, I think people.
Pause the criminal. Alright, any other thoughts on this?
Okay, so the only thing is, is that we were thinking if we were gonna set it down for public hearing tonight, but I think maybe what we have to do is revise it and bring it back next week.
It would work out. I think, yeah. Maybe next week we could put it, we can have a resolution, put it up, resolution for a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, Lo Sap.
Alright, the board should have before it the referendum regarding proposed services, what program for active volunteer ambulance members of the Chappaqua Volunteer Ambulance Corps?
Yeah, it's a separate.
Separate, insert that I put in there once. Yep, that's it, okay. And what the, the board is gonna notice is that they have seen this paper already, what they haven't seen is the actual points system program that has been, been proposed by Sueback and.
Accepted, yeah.
Okay, in its current form. Yeah, okay, fair enough. And so this outlines the steps that a participant would need to undertake in order to qualify for the Lo Sap program each year. And according to council, it's really important that when we, that this points program be circulated with the referendum. And what we are going to be doing is we're going to be publishing the referendum in the local paper no more than, no less than fourteen days before the December sixth election. We've been in touch with the board of elections, the board will notice that there's another item on our agenda to discuss, and that is the IMA with Westchester County. They will be providing us with election machines and technical assistance so that the referendum, which is on the last page, the proposition, is what will be on the ballot, and it'll be a single question for our residents, the members of the ALS district, which is everyone other than those seventeen hundred residents who are in, it's less than that, I'm sorry, seven hundred residents that are in the. Okay, Mid Hudson or Old Oak District, so it's basically election district number two and a small section of election district fourteen. But we will be having our election on the sixth, it is going to be from.
Yeah, there's. Um, can I just ask a silly question?
Sure.
Does this proposition have to be in all capitals?
Yes.
It does?
I believe it does.
It's very difficult for people to read.
It's, it's not going to be. I believe it.
Like the resolution on the back of the ballot yesterday.
This is giving us a period for us.
Maybe it'll be in the.
For something.
Yeah.
And it won't be on eight.
It's hard to read.
Yeah, right.
That house.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
You have to screen it.
It's a very.
It's very.
It's a.
I know, we didn't talk for seven.
And also, because the census is a run-on, it's.
It's gonna be seven AM, seven PM. On Wednesday the sixth, we're going to have a single phone place of town hall, the assembly room. Gonna have two Plan A machines, one Plan B machines and a couple of privacy screens. We'll secure a, a moving company to bring them voting machines here. And we will, we will be working with the board of elections on the format of the proposition and using one of their recommended papers to get the ballots actually.
Just ask them, ask, oh, it's, it's difficult to read.
I will answer. Okay.
I got a question, sometimes it shows court without an S and sometimes it shows corps, it's like volunteer ambulance corp, but then sometimes general volunteer ambulance corp, CORPS, which is right?
I think it's CORPS, I don't think it's a corporation.
Yeah, so that Sydney, that's in the referendum, so for the resolution, referendum as well.
Okay.
Right.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very good at that.
Yeah, I have noticed, I have noticed.
Very good, but part, part of the problem, and I couldn't see that, is the fine and it's one sentence.
Yes.
The whole thing is one sentence that is really in a question. They always say, they always say. It's only.
There are some sentences.
Be a little. That's their fault, I know.
Can I send my motion up there?
I promise, I promise. Yes, you can.
Alright, are we all generally good with the content of this though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, it's very nice, thank you.
Alright, so in a related discussion, do you want to talk briefly about the IMA?
Sure.
Westchester for the machines.
Yeah, just so, the board is gonna be asked to approve an IMA and include in this full agreement with Westchester County for the voting assistance and technical assistance. This is for our use of the voting machines for the special election and also the voting category of others. So we really don't have, there is no challenge for that, so it's just a matter of, you know, us agreeing with Westchester County that we will do this. And that's our one and a half questions.
Budget.
Brock, do you want to go over that, a couple of budget changes?
Sure.
Okay, so we have just a couple of changes tonight, a few categories of changes from the tentative version of the budget to the preliminary version, which we're going to approve this evening and set the public hearing for November twenty-eighth. And at that time, I will go through the entire budget in much greater detail. The net effect of all these changes here is actually gonna reduce our total tax levy by about thirty-seven thousand dollars and it's gonna give us just a little bit more room underneath the cap. When we had the original budget discussions, we talked about we were very close, about twenty thousand dollars underneath the cap, so this gives us a little bit more room. The first couple of changes are some parks and highway department vehicles and equipment. And we talked during the budget meetings that if we thought we were looking at a, at good results for the twenty-twenty-three, if we might be anticipating a surplus in the general and highway funds, we might recommend that we purchase these vehicles this year and be able to remove them from the twenty-twenty-four budget. And it does look that way after reviewing some of the revenue sources for general and highway. We look to be on track for, for a surplus there. And so at this time, we're gonna recommend purchasing these vehicles in twenty-twenty-three. We've removed them from the twenty-twenty-four budget. The next change has to do with the Lo Sap program that we just talked about. We're going to begin the Lo Sap program in twenty-twenty-four, but the first payment to the Lo Sap, the plan administrator is not actually until twenty-twenty-five, so it won't affect us budgetarily until the twenty-twenty-five budget. So we have removed and altered some of those budget lines. Next couple have to do with some salary changes that were discussed in executive session for the four major funds, refuse, general, highway and water fund. And the last change is we've added another hundred thousand dollars to the health insurance line. Unfortunately, based on some medical trends that we've seen towards the end of the year, we don't have the exact rates yet, but the original tentative budget proposed about a six percent increase and we're probably trending closer to eight percent or possibly even higher. So we just added another hundred thousand to give us a little more room. So all these changes have been incorporated into the preliminary budget that we're going to approve this evening.
So just, just to be clear, and I want to ask, you know, for myself as well, the tax cap change is thirty-seven point, approximately thirty-seven point seven thousand dollars, so is that the reduction from the tax levy?
Yes, correct, mm-hmm, yep. And that's across several funds. There were some changes and I'll talk about that at the public hearing, how that affects everybody, but yes.
Right, it's not a reduction in the budget, it's a reduction in the tax levy.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions?
The next thing on the agenda is the resolution in support of CCS please letting the governor Hoco regarding permissions of the education law.
So if you'll remember, when we met with the school board and we discussed SROs, part of the school board's concern was that they need to obviously budget for this and they have tax cap, much as we do. And so they wanted to advocate to have fees for security personnel and the like exempted from the tax cap. And as you know, they have provisions, they're allowed to do capital improvements, don't fall within their tax cap, they do for municipalities. So they wrote a letter to Governor Hokel and had asked us if we would support that letter, asking for expenditures like that to not be included in their tax cap. Frankly, I don't think they should include it in ours either. But, so I wanted to make sure we had a chance to look at that, especially as we're in budget season and as everyone's advocating for additional SROs. So I just wanted to bring it before the board to look at, we have a form of the letter that they sent in the packet. Can I open that up to comment?
I see no reason not to approve, I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. It would take it off of, well, not off of their costs, but off the levy, so it doesn't take it out of the taxpayer, you know.
It just gets against.
expense, but it's easier for them to budget for it and it would certainly save us money as well because they will, well, we'll see how we divvy it up, but it would make it easier.
Certainly to make our argument that it makes more sense for them to pay the lion's share of those fees a little more powerful.
Be careful what you wish for.
And it would improve the sense of safety around town.
Absolutely.
So, hundred percent in favor.
Mm-hmm.
I tell the reason.
I'd love to add it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. Ally?
Can she hear us?
I'm sure, I'm sure she can.
Maybe she can't hear us, I know she's. Okay, alright, great. So I think we should prepare a similar letter to Governor Hokel and we should certainly attach this and just say that we're in full support of, of this letter. Okay, perfect. Alright, so do we have anything to say?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was, had a, a technical glitch, but obviously you know I'm a hundred percent in support of this, I agree with everything you guys said. And now more than ever, I think keeping our students safe and making children and parents feel safe in our community schools couldn't be more important.
Agreed, well said.
Alright, Jill, is there anything else we have? Just a series of administrative items, so I'll go through what we want. Alright, so we've got our payment of claims which has stated November ninth. We've got authorization to set public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four budget and that's gonna be on November twenty-eighth. We've got authorization to enter into personal services contract with Scan Tech if the board recalls. Our development department, Sabrina specifically applied for and received a grant to convert our current Alphany system over to a general code and this is the company that would do that, it's for thirty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and it was the lowest responsible bidder. Next is authorization to retain annual service agreement for the moving water treatment plant for onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance. This is with Hatch Company, it's actually a revised resolution because Hatch forgot to include the cost of the lab instruments. So the revised estimate is up from eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, unfortunately to twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Next is authorization to award an RFP for property line and topographical services for the right-of-way at the intersection of Qu-Quirton Link Road and Lewis Place. So there's sort of an interesting backstory here. Over ten years ago, residents came to us who lived in the vicinity of this intersection asking us to do something about slowing traffic down and keeping the intersection safer. They actually asked us to install rumble strips. It took us ten years.
Be careful what you wish for.
We, we. Alright, in, in, in all fair disclosure, Bart said, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. I said, but they won, Bart, let's do it. They were happy for a week and then came back and said, no, those rumble strips, a lot of them we bought, it's really hard, can you take them out? People are driving over them intentionally. Nobody drives over rumble strips intentionally, they're riding over the rumble strips because the rumble strips are their job.
They're there, right.
And they're keeping people from crossing over the W L line. What we did explain to the neighbors is that we would take a topographical studies survey of the road and see whether or not there was, we would have the ability to take and create a little bit of a buffer around the central line, perhaps just creating like an island. Imagine it just being painted, Hatch painted, so that we could move the cars to the outer areas and sort of keep them away from that central line. So we try and make the road a little bit wider, give everybody a little bit more elbow room. We finally went up to date, this is our surveyor, we've secured the services of Creighton Manning. They were the lowest responsible bidder at eight thousand two hundred and twenty-four hours. Our, we got five bids and they went up as high as nineteen thousand five hundred. So we were excited to see the results of that and hoping that there's something I can do with the road that would help.
Let me just ask.
Sure.
And I, I feel for them, they are loud if people drive over them. Of course, they are doing their job and ultimately people won't drive over them because they know they shouldn't pass the W L line. Is this the best use of our funds? We have a lot of roads that have issues and we put them in at their request after saying this is not a good idea. We can't remove them now because they're doing their job and if there's an accident, we can't be seen to have removed a safety improvement. I'm, I'm not, because even though this is, what, twenty thousand dollars, okay? But then, or eight, but then if we're gonna actually do work based on that to widen the road there just because it's a little noisy, based on what they asked us to do in the first place, I'm just wondering if this is the best use of funds?
I would say we can drive, all go drive over it not to give them a hard time, if you're out loud in this.
But, you know, here.
I'm just curious as to how loud it is.
Yeah, I'm sure, no.
Look, we, we.
I think Lisa makes a fair point.
We've been, we've been getting emails from residents talking about the incredibly dangerous situation coming out of Annandale, I know the chief was out there looking at it. We've got issues on, you know, Whipper Will that we talked about coming off one seventeen. There are a lot of roads that need a lot of attention from a safety perspective. I just query whether this is where we want to spend our money.
I think that's, I actually think that's a fair point.
I do, I mean, it's eight thousand to do.
Just to do.
The study, it's a study, right.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a survey, a topic of.
Survey, and so.
Look, so that to see whether or not we can widen the road at a, at a pinch point.
But why not, you have any, as the chief said.
With a curve.
What does the ballpark about of how much it would cost?
I, I, I don't know what they're gonna find, it may be that we can't do anything. It may be because of the rocky.
But even if we can, I mean, the point of spending this money would be to do something.
If we can't, we lose.
Otherwise, we would be spending the money, so.
Right, but we don't, we don't know that there's any, any.
But like, what would we be spending ultimately?
I, I don't, I don't know.
To widen a road, it's not insignificant.
It's quite a lot of money.
So, I, I.
I, I, I think if we're not going to spend a significant amount of money, there's no point in doing a survey.
Are there other alternatives that have been explored?
Yes.
So this is.
We've, we've done, I'm still. Putting Chevron's putting speed sign.
But this is all about the noise right now at this point.
It's about the noise.
I mean, it, it does mean they're doing their job.
I, I have, I have met with the residents, I genuinely, yes, and I don't think that they quite appreciate it or understood what the rumble strips are, this is the only place where they. quite appreciate it or understood what the rumble strips are, this is the only place we need rumble strips that we that we have. We.
But we specifically said, you really don't want this, and they said, yes, we do.
But we made the decision to do it.
Yes, we made a decision to do it.
At their request, but yes.
Yeah, we do not request.
Right, but this is also their request, right?
We do not request.
But also if we don't, you know, had we not done it after they requested and there was an accident, it's also then, well, why didn't you put them, we asked for rumble strips? For safety perspective.
Would would there ever be an opportunity should we move?
This is not a safety issue, this is a
Rumble strips.
a nuisance issue.
Would we ever? If if we repaint the road, could they be removed?
If you can't.
Yeah, but we wouldn't.
The problem is if they're making noise, it's because people are going on the other side of the double yellow line. So then if we remove it and there's an accident, someone could claim, well, you removed a safety, you know, something for safety and I, had they been there, I wouldn't have gone over the double yellow line, there wouldn't have been accident.
Right.
It's a little hard for us to remove it once they're installed.
Yeah, I know, I understand that we know that we need them there.
You don't, you just have.
Although we don't have them anywhere else.
Yeah.
I mean, and now they're complaining about them, so.
Do I mean, do we have any information about like are they, is the sound so loud that it's actually violating our like noise ordinance design?
I I I don't think it could feel terrible, I'm not too annoyed, I'm curious.
No, I mean, I I agree, I I feel like I need more information before I have.
It's criminal, I just don't take it.
Read your court bill guys, we're already clocking morning.
I don't, I'd like to have a ball a ballpark amount of what the road widening cost would be.
I'm going to midday.
I don't know.
For the.
I I don't know because I don't know what they're gonna find. If they find that that there is no no elbow room on either side of the road because of a rappy app wrapping on one side and, you know, areas on the other, then then it's not gonna be.
But I guess the to Vicky's point, so it doesn't if we're doing this survey, it's because we're actually hoping they're going to find that we can widen the road, which is then gonna cost money.
Right.
So by approving this survey, we need to take that next leap and assume that that means it's not just eight thousand, it's another hundred thousand or fifty thousand or whatever it's gonna cost, we don't know maybe what that number is. It may say there's nothing we can do, but it's also free to not do anything. So, you know, we're spending the money assuming we want to spend more money. Um, so that's why it's hard, like is the eight thousand gonna be?
It would be. I don't.
Fifty thousand or no?
And it's it's not just gonna be, no, it's clearly not gonna it's most probable it's not going to be just eight thousand.
Right.
But what it's going to be beyond that, I I don't know because I don't know it's gonna be regulated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah.
I just feel like hearing, you know, knowing there are significant safety issues on other intersections in town, I would rather see that money go toward rectifying safety issues rather than nuisance issues.
Hey, we can just table this for now?
At this point.
Okay.
Does everyone agree?
Yeah, I mean.
I I will get a little more information.
I think it's a hard one because I'm not sure we would say yes if it were a hundred thousand dollars to fix the road.
I'll see more information.
Right.
And if we know that, then it would be at least that. And if we know that, then there's no point in spending.
Then why spend the eight?
Alright, so let's just get more information.
I agree, just a little.
Exactly.
That's a more information I can give you.
I'm not sure if I like all school outdoors, I'll check it out myself.
Certainly, I know it's not easy.
Please.
But um.
Have have.
I think I have to think it through a little bit.
Whoever just said it has a point, does it violate our noise ordinance, do we know? Has anyone measured it?
Thought we did, honestly.
You did?
I I I didn't, I thought somebody was out there.
Somebody did?
Yeah.
It it probably has to do with the size of the truck, the
If they. So we still can't take it away, but.
The size of the vehicle, the speed of the vehicle, the, yeah.
Right.
I mean, if the noise ordinance is being violated, you know, a hundred times a day or something like that, I mean, I have no idea, I might feel differently about potentially.
I I will say that I drive on that road relatively often and I make it a point not to go over the rumble strips, you know, so I mean, I always make it a point not to drive over the W L I, but I now, you know, there are annoying rumble strips to drive over too, so you always make it a point, I feel like it's doing its job.
Alright, so let's so let's just go.
Next, let's table that one.
Okay, alright, next is authorization uh to approve a change where for biometal link moving covert um replacement. So uh this is uh eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, it's additional work required by FEMA um by our consultant tech tech.
Part is you okay if I sit in?
Sure, it's fine, thank you.
Oh, yes, the public court session.
I'll wash the door.
Hello.
Oh, okay.
Hi Jill, how you doing?
Good, how are you, Tom?
Good, thank you very much.
Um, sorry, uh, okay, authorization to establish a capital project for the New York State New Point Twenty Water Main Improvement Project. So twelve million seven hundred thousand dollars um for the water main replacement. That's the piggyback project to the um extension of the sewer trunk line that runs up north of the county is not even there. Um, next is authorization to declare surplus equipment from police, this is a firearm surplus in addition to the twenty sixteen Ford Explorer. And we don't need that twenty sixteen Ford Explorer. Um, next is authorization to uh purchase a vehicle utilizing the Westchester County bid from L I T P W. Um, this is the an electric uh light duty uh truck at a price not to exceed fifty seven thousand three hundred and ninety eight dollars, this is vans. Um, or electrician was, yeah, or electrician.
The electricians, electric van.
Yeah.
Nice.
Um, and this still budgeted for, I assume.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
No, this was what we were putting in this year, so that's what we talked about, that we.
So. Oh, this is the one that we're kind of pre.
Yeah, that we think, so in the highway fund, we have surplus funds, we've we got uh about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in FEMA funds this year from storms in prior years past, but that was revenue that we hadn't anticipated this year.
Mm-hmm.
So we think we can uh buy the electric vehicle out of that surplus.
Okay, and then also we're purchasing the um the parks, the uh the F three fifty to replace rep nineteen.
Yep.
And that's the same sort of thing?
Yep.
That was what they brought it out then.
Yeah, literally, we we were.
Ever seen that around town?
Oh my god, we're afraid like the water truck, the water tank is just gonna drop to the ground, yeah, it's past its prime. Um, next is authorization to purchase the crane service delay, the new we purchased emergency standby generator at the moving water treatment plant. We're very excited as we anticipate its uh delivery, that's gonna be just shy of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the next is the authorization to establish a capital project, um the installation of the heat pumps at the Chapel Park train station. We're using a sand grant that uh we were lucky enough to get from uh State Senator Pete Harcom. Um, and uh so we first need to establish the capital project and the next thing we're gonna be doing is uh purchasing uh electric heating system for the Chapel Park train station from Amnia Partners. Um, and that's just just gonna be just shy of uh seventy thousand dollars. The remaining amount will be uh used for incidentals. It's a purchase is sixty seven, sixty six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and another thirty two fifty, just incidentals. Um, last is an authorization.
So did we get any reimbursement from the N T A for that?
Yeah.
Hmm? Oh, I'm sorry, the train station.
This is the building where Bobo's is in?
Yeah.
The Bobo's building, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, yeah, but the we're gonna uh retire the old uh older.
Yeah, that's good.
Uh, next is uh we have a revised resolution regarding acceptance ships uh payment. We were originally um accepting the amount of uh five hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars and we're actually only gonna accept five hundred and twenty four thousand. We're uh we're gonna hold the rest of it um for future years. Um, and uh next is authorization to purchase carpeting and laminate uh flooring for the town hall lobbies, police detectives and the P D U offices. We've got uh.
What do they look like?
They'll ram it, I mean, they're gonna replace them in the vestibule up there, right?
Yeah, but what do they look like? Like the the carpeting, I'd like to look at it before it's purchased.
Who makes the?
Unless we have a designer on.
Yeah, who normally makes those decisions?
Walter.
Walter Clark.
Can you ask Walter to run it by me?
It's it's standard.
It's standard.
Standard, it's in a detective's office, so he's, you shouldn't see it at most.
No, no, but it's for town hall lobbies also and.
You know, the bill on it.
Oh, I saw that. Um, next is authorization to approve the prison transport um agreement, that's just reimbursement for the county for our food services, transporting uh prisoners back and forth. Um, the next one has to do with authorization to enter the agreement for Verizon uh connect the vehicle tracking, so we're changing our D P S company uh to Verizon. And uh.
Maybe they wanna make sure we have service. Just saying.
No, no.
Next is authorization to approve our Winter Wonderland expenditure, uh we said this is always going to uh is requesting twenty five hundred dollars to put on uh Winter Wonderland, uh it made more than that last year, but she didn't, so it will be on the um sixteenth at one P M. In the afternoon at the checkback. Um, and uh.
Did we only do it one day, one time?
I think she ended up with a second um a second show this year, this year.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah, the first one was sold out, so we'll see how she does this year.
Okay.
And the last one's actually the same I M A that we talked about earlier. Alright, and then we've got our consent agenda items and uh proposed actions.
Alright, so.
So hang on, hang on, um the consent agenda item.
We're striking.
We're striking number three. And twenty.
Yeah, twenty, we're gonna hold twenty till next time. Um, yeah.
Alright.
Ask any, we may have to switch the date on that, that we'll have to save.
Alright, I moved to adopt items one through one and two, as well as four through nineteen, listed below, as requested below on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Um, I moved to approve the payment of claims amount of seven hundred eighty one thousand nine hundred twenty four dollars, ninety eight cents listed on the summary pre-check wiring report. Detailed after detailed report, both dated November sixth twenty three, two thousand twenty three, checks will be issued and mailed to claimant list on Thursday, November ninth of this glorious year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I moved to accept the resignation of Bella Seth Sheff, pardon me, for the position of part-time receptionist within the Department of Public Works effective September seventh, twenty twenty three. The town would like to thank you for your service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Uh, I'm authorized to post and hiring the position of part-time receptionist within the Department of Public Works and now we rate ranging from sixty dollars to three dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I'm authorized to hire the Geo发展A Roca for the position of laborer within the Department of Public Works, highly unioned. Minutes have the annual salary of fifty thousand dollars for fifty thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and nine cents, effective November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
And move to adopt local law, uh local auto amendment chapter one hundred and twenty three regarding adding Ridge Road to the full stop street as well as adding Taylor Road, Douglas Road and Trips Street as Yale Street. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It was.
Um, I move to adopt the following resolution. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby authorizes town board member-elect Jennifer Klein to attend all remaining executive sessions of the town board in twenty twenty three and to receive such documents and information as the town supervisor or town administrator deem appropriate to facilitate their transition to her official position. Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the parking area license agreement with N A B Daycap Inc. To authorize the use of the self commuter parking lot in Chapel Park train station for the total license fee amount of five thousand dollars effective from June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four to August
Twenty two.
twenty second twenty twenty four. Second.
All in favor?
Alright. Rejourn, are you done?
Okay. Well, motion to adjourn.
And move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Alright.